... seventy-six seven, and it was seconded by Commissioner Elliott. So I want to dispense with this matter of severing seventy-six six through seventy-six seven before I move on to the other thing.
Also, I'd like to make a motion to sever seventy-eight.
Okay, yep. Soon as I'm done with this, I'll get to you, and you can make a motion to sever seventy-eight. Commissioner Elliott has seconded it. Any discussion? Okay? All those in favor of severing Resolution seventy-six six through seventy-six seven, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Seventy-six six and seventy-six seven are severed. So we're now talking about seventy-four four, I mean seventy-fifty-one through seventy-eight one, with the exception of seventy-six six and seventy-six seven. Commissioner Williams?
Yes. Would you sever, make a motion to sever seventy-fifty-six and seventy-eighty? And seventy-fifty-six, if possible, we could have a brief discussion in executive session?
On seventy-fifty-six?
Uh huh.
Is that related to a specific individual?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, would the discussion possibly be related to a specific individual?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to sever Resolution seventy-fifty-six and seventy-eighty?
Yes.
Is there, moved by Commissioner Williams, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Elliott. All those in favor of severing seventy-fifty-six and seventy-eighty, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. All right, so separately, we're going to vote on seventy-six six, seventy-six seven, seventy-fifty-six, and seventy-eighty. Those are severed. Now let's go back to our original motion of seventy-fifty-one through seventy-eighty-one. I had a motion, right, from, who made the motion? Madam Clerk, if you can just remind me?
I don't know. I'm sorry.
Okay, let me, okay, thank you. So we're back to Resolution seventy-fifty-one through seventy-eighty-one, with the exception of seventy-fifty-six, seventy-six six, seventy-six seven, and seventy-eighty. Any questions or comments around seventy-fifty-one through seventy-eighty-one, with the exception of the ones, the four outstanding?
President Evans?
Yes.
In reference to Resolution seventy-fifty-seven, we are, we are entering into an agreement with Hillside Children's Center for Alternative to Suspension Rooms at Charlotte. How does that contrast with our in-school suspension program?
Mr. Superintendent?
Seven-fifty-seven. Seven-fifty-seven.
Sue, is that, Gladys, is that yours?
That's there.
Um, you have my microphone, Sue. Thank you. Gladys, is your part of this, or no?
That's the program that runs with their Twilight Program. So it is an after-school program for the grades ten through twelve. So it's an additional program to their in-school ISS room.
Let me, let me just get some clarification on this, Mrs. Superintendent. So, so the in-school suspension program is not throughout the district?
Yes.
And I guess then the question is?
No, it is. Some schools have a multi-tiered program, like East right now has one as well. As long as they meet the regulation of the minimum of hours of school a day, some schools have a secondary program where some kids will come to school perhaps two to six or two to seven. So Charlotte has that. East High School has it as well. So some kids come to day ISS, some kids come to afternoon or evening ISS.
Yeah, I guess my concern is, is that we're spending ten thousand here when we were spending, I think we're budgeting three million for the other program. It just seems to me that this is...
Along with it is tutoring that goes with the students and social-emotional work.
Yeah, the affective, the affective...
That's what's happening in the in-school suspension program, correct?
Well, the in-schools, for the most, the ISS programs for the most part have a teacher in place to make sure instruction continue. The other piece around the affective needs, but which is something that, for some reason, doesn't seem to make it out there. The fact is that the ISS is not just a place, a holding place for kids, but they are quite a bit of guidance support in place as well. So this is to add to the social-emotional support that is part of the program at Charlotte.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on Resolutions seventy-five-one through seventy-eighty-one, with the exception of seventy-fifty-six, seventy-six six, seventy-six seven, and seventy-eighty?
I do, President Evans.
Yes, Commissioner Elliott.
Seventy-eighty-eight, is this the program with the, that I introduced you to Superintendent Bizar, University of Rochester School of Medicine and Dentistry?
No, actually what you introduced us to, Commissioner, is a fantastic program. It doesn't require funding from us.
Because I wasn't asking if you...
No, no, no.
... any money to that.
No, no, actually, it's, it's, it really is a phenomenal program. We're now partners with it, but it doesn't cost us anything, really being part of the conversation, really.
And so how are we, how is the School of Medicine and Dentistry having an impact on behavioral issues?
Under the School of Medicine and Dentistry is the Kirsch Center for Developmental Disabilities, which is under Strong's Pediatric Unit. This contract is to work with a doctor at the Pediatric Unit who specializes in behavior interventions. And it is the first planning phase of our district-wide behavior intervention initiative for positive behavioral supports in the district.
All right, thank you.
Does Resolution seventy-eighty-eight have anything to do with autism? Is autism addressed under seventy-eighty-eight?
Last month, you approved a resolution to have Strong Center for Developmental Disabilities begin a program review of autism programs within the district. And actually, you see, that's the first clause of the, the first whereas clause in this resolution was for that twenty-seven thousand five hundred. So because we exceeded that twenty-five thousand threshold, even though this is a different group within the Kirsch Center, we needed to do a resolution for this eleven thousand dollars to begin this work.
Thank you. Autism folks is huge and very important. Oh, go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, reference to, not you, thank you. Resolution seventy-five-nine, DocuLegal. We took a tour of the copying area on Hudson Avenue, and I'm wondering why we banned six thousand dollars to this organization when it appears that we have a pretty outstanding copying center on Hudson Avenue?
Mr. Superintendent, oh, Ms. Vade?
Watch now, Commissioner.
Ms. Vade?
Yes. Commissioner Elliott, we did look into and ask our print shop whether they could do this work for us, and they tried it, and they said they couldn't. I mean, it's deadline-driven work. The volume is tremendous. You know, it's in response to subpoenas and confidential information that we have to supply to other attorneys and courts. And we did make an attempt with the print shop, and, and they told us, they informed us that they were not able to handle the work.
We actually charge as well, so it's not just us paying. We get revenue back from this. When I requested, say, a student is suing the district, or parents in the district, we have to provide information. We photocopy, but we charge the legal, their attorney twenty-five cents per copy. So we pay from the doer, but we actually recoup the money, most of it back.
Twenty-five cents per copy?
Yes.
Good lord!
I got one last question.
Yep, is it still on seventy-five-nine?
Uh-uh, seventy-six.
Okay, let me, any other questions on seventy-five-nine? Okay, Commissioner White, and then I'll come back to Commissioner Elliott with the question on another resolution.
I do know a little bit about those copying costs, and actually, twenty-five cents is actually very reasonable. There are attorneys that charge more for that. But on this particular resolution, we always are on the lookout for an opportunity to engage the services of a minority business contractor. And, and I have no business interest at all in Mr. Augustine's business, but I know Mr. Augustine has opened up a new division of Eltrex that might be separate from that. It's called Monarch Printing. I know in the past, I've been critical of the legal department, this is before you even got here, Jean-Claude, that that is a department that has an opportunity to give professional service contracts. And it would appear to me, and Ms. Lee, this might be something you might be interested in as well, that this would be an opportunity to get a minority business enterprise involved. I don't know exactly the scope of work that his new printing shop does, but it's got a great shop there on Exchange in the new Cornhill Development Area. He is a, Jean-Claude, you may not have met him yet, but he's a reputable and well-known businessman in this community. And I would ask, perhaps not on this particular resolution, I won't vote against this resolution. It sounds as if you're, you're just trying to continue some services. But I would ask the law department, look into the services provided by Mr. Augustine and Monarch Printing. He is a minority businessman in our community.
Thank you. And then back to Commissioner Elliott, you had a question on Resolution seventy-six...
Yeah, Resolution seventy-sixty. What is STAR Teacher Selection Interview Process, and why are we paying them sixteen grand? Like, yes, we paid them twenty-four before. What is this organization?
Haberman, Michelle.
Michelle.
It's actually quite a phenomenal program.
If you say so, Mr. President.
I'm sure you believe me, Commissioner.
The STAR Teacher Program is by Martin Haberman. It's a program that assesses whether teachers can be effective urban educators in our district. It also has an interview process. The interview questions are very targeted to ask specific information of people who want to come into urban environments to ensure that they have the necessary skills, attitudes, and dispositions that can better improve our selection process for educators as well as administrators in our district. And it's called the STAR. We used it back in the early nineties, I believe, Martin Haberman. We used it, and we found that we had better success in being able to ascertain whether teachers could really work with our students in the district. And so we wanted to bring it back as an interview tool for administrators and teachers. So far, we have done training for many of our principals, and this is a continuation of that training, so they and anyone else can really know how to interview effectively so we can pick the best teachers for our district and pick the best administrators for our district.
If I may add, Michelle, if you stay for, for one second. I, I will say it again and again, the two biggest issues we have facing us really are principal and teacher quality in our district. And it's something we need to target heavy, heavy, and want to give you kudos for putting that in place for the selection process, as well as the principal piece that we've been testing with the East High School selection.
That's right.
I've shared some of the links with Commissioner Evans. In fact, we have people across the country interviewing through a system. We can see them on video without having to travel to Rochester. After the final selection, we can have them come and see them in person, talk to them. But in fact, this has been a phenomenal process for us. I want to thank you for what you've been doing here.
And the STAR, just to mention one other thing, this has been Martin Haberman, who is a renowned guru in urban education, and he's written many books about how to select effective teachers and administrators for urban districts. Thirty years of his research, and it has phenomenal impact in many of our urban districts across the country. And I'm very proud and happy to say that we have brought it back into the Rochester City School District so we can have better teachers and better administrators for our kids to improve that process.
Why did they?
Thank you. Hold on one second.
I'm done.
Commissioner Williams?
Why did you, why do they discontinue using him back in the nineties, from the nineties till now?
I really do not know the answer to that, Commissioner Williams. As leadership changed within the district, it was a conscious decision to stop using that tool. And what was really interesting about it, before I became an administrator in this district, I had to go through that process, and I found it to be an extremely rigorous process, interview process, to ensure that I understood and knew what I needed to know to be an effective administrator in this district. And then, for whatever reason, I guess, depending on the leadership of the HR Department, they made the conscious choice not to have it within our system any longer. And I made the conscious choice, along with, with the support of Jean-Claude Bizar, our superintendent, to bring it back.
Okay, now it's just for teachers and administrators?
Yes.
Okay, so I take it, the, the outcome then is that we should see a higher retention rate over time for both teachers and administrators?
Well, the interesting thing about it in the district is that we have, we have an excellent retention rate for our teachers and our administrators. The big issue is, you want to make sure that...
You're retaining the ones you want to keep.
Yeah. You really want to make sure that we are selecting the best people to work with our kids in the district, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams, are you complete?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Powell?
I don't know if this actually will influence colleagues at all, but I believe that Dr. Janey was a huge fan of the Haberman model, and if there was a conscious leadership decision, it was in that transition from Dr. Janey to his successor.
Thank you. Any other things or questions around seventy-fifty-one through seventy-eighty-one, with the exception of the ones that were severed? Okay. Hearing none. All the, Student Rep, what's your advisory vote on Resolution seventy-five-one through seventy-eighty-one, with the exception of the ones that were severed?
Yes.
Thank you. All those in favor of Resolutions seventy-five-one through seventy-eighty-one, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed on seventy-fifty-one through seventy-eighty-one?
Seventy-fifty-seven.
Seventy-fifty-seven is a no for Commissioner Elliott. Madam Clerk, have you captured that? Any others? Okay, the ayes have it. Thank you. I will now entertain a motion to approve Resolution number seventy-five-six.
That's...
Executive session.
Executive session.
Executive session?
Yes.
Okay, can you just make a motion that we discuss it in executive session, though?
So moved.
Oh, you did, you did make a motion. Okay.
Yes.
Severed to be discussed in executive session, seventy-five-six. Okay. Seven, Resolution, can I have a motion on Resolution seventy-six six, please?
I think a motion to table Resolution seventy-six six.
There's a motion on the table, a motion to table Resolution seventy-six six. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Brennan. Tables don't go to, don't have discussion, they go straight to a vote. All those in favor of tabling Resolution seventy-six six, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Can I have a motion on Resolution seventy-six seven, please?
I think a motion to table Resolution seventy-six seven.
There's a motion to table Resolution seventy-six seven, seconded by Commissioner Elliott. All those in favor of tabling Resolution seventy-six seven, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is, table, seventy-six six and seventy-six seven are tabled. I look forward to the discussions around those resolutions. We will now move to Resolution, just again, for those of you keeping track, Resolution seventy-four-two and seventy-six will be briefed on in executive session. Resolution number seventy-eighty, may I have a motion to approve Resolution number seventy-eighty, please?
This is supposed to be tabled, right?
Yes.
This is going to executive session for discussion.
Not seventy-eighty.
Not seventy-eighty. May I have a motion to approve Resolution seventy-eighty, please?
So moved.
Been moved by Commissioner Powell. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Brennan. Questions around Resolution number seventy-eighty?
Not so much question, but discussion.
Okay, questions and discussions. Commissioner, who's hand did I say? Commissioner Williams.
Williams.
And then Commissioner Powell.
You know, I, I would, and I don't know whether we can do it or not, but, you know, make a motion to table us to totally get a chance to confer with our outside legal council. I mean, there's some, in terms of what their superintendent is proposing, I think it's a good start, but there are just a lot of other issues in this package that needs to be addressed, like the personal, the personal employment contracts, the non-elected employer-sponsored 403Bs, the bonuses, and everything else. I mean, it is a fairly complex document, and whatever changes we make, I think it should be done with our outside legal council.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to give the superintendent an opportunity to comment to this resolution, and then let Commissioner Powell chime in. Mr. Superintendent?
Commissioner, I don't, I don't disagree that there are many issues with the document that we need, we need to address, and, and I've said this going back to last year, but we need to do this in chunks. Trying to tackle all of it at once just didn't make any sense. Last, two years ago, actually, when Dr. Callow was here, John Giuffreida tried to create a separate group and just summarily change people's benefits. And what happened was, a number of notices of claim came to the district lawsuits that were about to be sued, because we were, in some ways illegally, just pulling the rug on a number of, of people. At the same time, we also have to be conscious of the fact that this resolution, or this, this regulation was created for medical for, and was pushed forward by, by Gant and Alisi making this, making this work. So we've got to do this sensibly. I wrote something last year, and I want to get it vetted by, by legal and by HR. At the same time, of course, we had quite a bit of resistance from the leadership in HR and NHI, H R and legal, to, to make the changes. So what you see is a first step. We have much more to do, but we have to have and do this in a way that makes sense legally. Yes, we do need perhaps at times to engage outside legal to make this work. I think these two were, in some ways, low-hanging fruits. I met with the S E G employees here to talk, because they're very concerned, too, that many of them give up the union protection to come into this group and to completely eliminate everything they have, does not make sense. I can tell you that I do not have personal employee contracts. No one here who works for me has that. We are not paying for PhDs any longer, EDIs any longer. We have one person who has been grandfathered, and once that individual finishes, it will be gone. The 403B were different pieces that doesn't exist anymore in, in the district, and no one's getting a bonus. But the bonus structure, I believe, need to remain, because you do want to have some performance incentive for individuals. The same thing can be applied for teachers and for principals, et cetera. Principals do have a bonus structure as part of their contract. And if you ask me, teachers need to have it as well, based on real rigorous performance data. But I do agree that there's much that needs to be addressed in that document, but I suggest that we do it in chunks and not all at once.
Well, but even if, you know, even if we do it in, in chunks, I think for us, the board, we should confer with outside legal council. I think the interests here are fairly divergent between the interests of the board and the interest of the administration. And on your side, you have the benefit of your general counsel's advice, and we should be afforded the same opportunity in terms of having our outside counsel review it and make comments or recommendations also. The danger that, that I see is that, when the auditors came in here, I mean, this is one of the things that they flag, and this is one of the things that they will cite us for whenever they release their, the report. And for us to basically, for us to, to agree with a change now and not make some of the other changes, it basically says that we approved, or we are approving, the rest of the document, which may or may not be the case.
I, I don't believe the resolution calls and says that we're approving the entire document. The board actually approved the initial document.
Yeah.
So it is the board's decision from the initial document. What you will be approving tonight, two changes to the document, and it's more that needs to come forward. And I don't disagree that perhaps having outside legal counsel look at this as well as we move forward into looking at what other changes we want to make, but also want to caution us that we do not summarily change people's benefits, those they sign on for. I believe what you'll see from the Controller's Office are specific issues of specific individuals and contracts that were created from the document, not the document itself overall.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, no, because I...
I'll differ, but...
We won't know until we see the report.
Exactly. The report hasn't been published yet, so I don't want to sort of respond to it ahead of time. I also had meetings with the Controller's Office and prior superintendents in discussing some items from this document and some questions that they had. So I have perhaps be a bit more information than you have, Commissioner, in terms of the specific areas that they have concerns over. And those are areas that I have concerns as well, one of the reasons that we do not do it right now. So my concern in tabling this is that, especially around the, the increases in pay, as well as the time moving forward, July first, everything happens automatically. So if we don't get this done early enough, I will not have the time, unfortunately, to do what is to be done. We can table, but it, I may be able to enact things until maybe next January or next July. That's my only concern in, in making this. So again, I don't believe that we are looking to approve the entire document, but two initial changes that we want to make. And again, I want, we have a large S E G group here, and the employees also follow the S E G rules and regulations. So we want to make sure we do this in a fashion that, that is sensible. In fact, if I may, last December, when I was coming on board, and I heard about the creation of a C E G group, and begin to see, receive calls when I was in New York City, as well as talking to some of the attorneys in town who were filing claims, I asked Commissioner Evans as well as Dr. Callow to please slow this down so we do this without incurring huge costs of litigation against the district. Those, I believe, we would have lost, every single one of. If we allowed what was happening last year, just move forward. As well as creating a large, disgruntled group of individuals who actually work for us. Again, a lot of people who come on this group give up tenure, give up the protection of a union, and become outwilled employees and can be terminated at any day for almost absolutely no reason. I can decide the way they're dressed today and tell them to leave. So when you give them that kind of protection, you, you need to have some other things. And I'm not saying that all of that is warranted. Some of it is not, and I will agree with you on that.
Well, I would, I would be in favor of moving forward if some of the things, in my opinion, the, the personal employment contracts, for example, that's a low-hanging fruit. The four, the non-elected employer-sponsored 403B is a low, a low-hanging fruit. And some of the other items that you talked about, you're saying that no one's using those now, but you could just as well dispense with those. I would prefer not to leave those in, because what happens is, I mean, it still gives you the option at some point in time to say, to do it, and without any kind of board oversight.
All right, hold on one second. I got a little speakers list here. I had Commissioner Williams, can I move on to someone else? Commissioner Williams, we keep the discussion going. Commissioner Powell, we had her hand up. Commissioner Brennan had his hand up, and then Commissioner Elliott. So let me start with Commissioner Powell, Commissioner Brennan, and then Commissioner Elliott. Go ahead.
There's a lot of things that could be said, but I guess I'll focus only on this, that I don't personally believe that the board has to be consulted on this, that there's a legal obligation. This is an S E G group that the law created for the superintendent to control. If he's asking for our input and our blessings, and he's telling us that he wants to do this incrementally, then I say that we should take him hat as word and give him an opportunity to demonstrate the good faith through future actions and not, and not bar the door because it's not all being done at once.
Thank you. Commissioner Brennan, and then Commissioner Elliott.
Just briefly, and as I've said many times before, the original sin here was the law in the first place, I think. And what we really need to do is make repeal of this law a priority item in our legislative agenda. Secondly, would, I think some of the concerns that Alan is raising sound reasonable, and the divergence of interest could be resolved collegially, maybe if we inserted language into the resolution that stipulated it a little more clearly, that this is incremental and we do anticipate addressing some of the other concerns. Would that be helpful? And would that be agreeable to, well, first, I suppose, Alan, who's been raising the question?
I think that's, that's a, Commissioner Brennan has a point on the floor, a line that says that this is incremental and will, we will address the other provisions of the contract as we move forward.
And I don't want to minimize, I understand who has discretion here, but, you know, since we're being asked, the questions, I think the questions that Alan is raising are, are important.
Right.
And at the same time, I don't want to, I don't want to prevent anything from being done.
Right.
Nor do I want to leave the impression that the other matters are unimportant.
Okay, great. All right, so we have that on the table, and then Commissioner Elliott, and then Commissioner White. That way we have, then that would have given everyone the opportunity to speak, except for me, and I'll make, I'll go last. Commissioner Elliott?
Yeah, I, this is not an area of, area of strength of mine, and I would be interested in having a consultation with an attorney on this who understands these issues. I, you know, I hear what Commissioner Powell is saying, that we should give superintendent, you know, this good faith effort. I've been in this district three years, and I tell you, I, I guess I just sort of take some exception to that I'd rather that we look at it, have some attorneys to look at this, and then, you know, we come to a decision in terms of approving it. They, they are, he did bring it for us, for our approval, but I would want to err on the side of caution and get some legal, some independent, legal advice before making a decision.
Thank you. Commissioner White?
Yeah. Two things. You know, I will concede that I don't know enough about these amended rules and regulations. In fact, I was sort of following the email between Commissioner Powell and Commissioner Williams, and there was a question that was asked, does the board even have regulations? It's the superintendent who has them. And I don't know that that question was definitively answered or not, but I found the whole dialogue between you two very interesting, but I, two... the whole dialogue between you two very interesting, but I, too, Commissioner Williams, have a sense that I don't know enough, and I don't know if this is what you were saying, but I don't know enough about this to make an informed judgment about whether we should support this resolution. Secondly, inconsistent with that, Commissioner Powell, you make the, I think I hear you say that the superintendent can do this independently, that there's a law that allows him to, your construction of this law is that he could do whatever he wants to do. And so if that's true and Superintendent Bizar, if there are some timeframes, which I don't appreciate, is there some reason why you can't go ahead and independently make these changes? And then to sort of pick up on Commissioner Williams' point, that we could do our homework, so nothing is really jeopardized. I mean, if a counselor, Powell, is correct, that in fact you can go forward and you can do this independently and her construction of law makes sense to me and Commissioner Williams suggesting that we just do our homework, would there be any jeopardy or harm caused if Commissioner Powell is correct?
Well, that's the issue, is if she's correct, I'd like to see that language.
Hold on, is Mr. Superintendent?
No, I mean, you're right. The question is time. I would need to talk to the folks in IT and HR to see how quickly we can implement once the board approves, we can't move on this because right now the system that we have automatically frontloads. So we change the people's office systems, it's quite a bit of IT work and HR work that needs to be done to actually recreate this. But, I mean, we can reintroduce this, I don't know how long the board would need to do an independent analysis, but even there, you would need quite a bit of discussion from the findings of-
But you keep on saying the board needs to approve and I guess my question is, does the board need to approve?
Yes. My attorneys have told me yes.
Could you sort of enlighten us? Would that be okay, Superintendent?
Absolutely.
Again, I mean, I've been hesitating to speak up because, you know, my role here is as parliamentarian and the question that you're asking would constitute legal advice. So since we are moving into executive session, I would defer, you know, this discussion because I think that does get into the realm of legal advice.
Okay, so you're saying you want to discuss this resolution in executive session?
Yeah.
Oh, that's what you're recommending, Madam Parliamentarian?
Yes.
Okay. The speaker's list, oh, well, Commissioner White still has the floor.
No, I'm done. Thank you very much.
Are you done?
I'm used to it.
Okay. I gotta keep, you know, yeah, too much going on. Commissioner Powell.
Based on the precedent of board previously voting, it would certainly be a cautious move forward to go ahead and endorse the superintendent's proposal, whether it's, whether we learn later or not decisively that our vote is necessary or not. I would worry that mine construction is flawed because the downside risk is higher than the upside risk. The downside risk is if somebody sues the district because the superintendent came out with a, an official memoranda and an employee decides, no, 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 it needed a resolution from the board and takes us to court on that matter alone, that the downside risk is bigger than I personally want to embrace.
And I'll just say too, I think that for the record, it should be noted that superintendent is actually attempting to clean up what he inherited. So I think people should under that. He's not trying to give folks 403Bs, not saying that another superintendent would, but I think that what you're attempting to do, and I don't want to speak for you, is to clean up some of the regulations around S E G and I think that we should at least give him credit there. I am very, I would be very reluctant to have the administration, the superintendent in this case, bring something to the board for approval and for us to tell him, ah, no, we don't want to endorse it, we're going to let you do it on your own. I would not want to do that. I think we all recognize that Article 4 is, it is what it is. I believe it's the superintendent's job to put forth the regulations around the policy as it relates to Article 4, but what we need to decide here today is whether or not we want to, we want to vote on this. We want to, Commissioner Brennan said something about adding a line and then I heard something about moving to executive session, then I also heard from Commissioner Williams about tape, did you say table?
Right.
Tabling. So I hear three different, three different things and I want to get some type of resolution around this, so it will be here till midnight.
Well, you know, just want to clarify, remember, this is not the superintendent's document, this is ours. This is the document of the board itself. And I think one of the, one of the problems that we encountered is the fact that after the legislation was passed, what the board basically did was said, look, tell us what we should do, which was akin to saying, write your own performance appraisal. So the guy who, the guys who did this basically wrote it to their benefit. And that's where the problem is. So, and you know, and they did it without any kind of outside, without the board having any kind of outside review or recommendation in terms of what was going on. And once it was done, it was passed and, you know, the board had, they basically closed their eyes to what was going on.
Mr. President.
I remember we hired attorneys.
Well, I mean, I wasn't on the board then, so.
I'm sorry.
I wasn't on the board, I don't think anybody was here. Commissioner Powell, were you here? You weren't here, were you?
We hired attorneys.
Okay.
Really quickly, and I, you hate to concede that you haven't read anything, but I, this document was just passed out to us. I assume it's the amended rules and regulations and I might have missed this, it's been a busy month for me.
This was in our board, this was sent in the board packet.
Yeah, I, as I said, I might have missed it, but I gotta agree with Commissioner Williams, perhaps for entirely different reasons, he apparently has reviewed this, I have not and I, for that reason, and I apologize. I think this issue is, I'm very familiar with the issue and the problems that this, these rules have caused us in the past and I appreciate the fact the superintendent is trying to clean up a mess that perhaps that he did not create. But I, not knowing the answer to that question, which I'm told I could get it in executive session.
Yeah, can I just recommend, because Chuck, yeah, I would recommend that we, I'm going to ask that we take Commissioner Williams' recommendation of tabling because Chuck Johnson will be here and then what I want to do is have a separate executive session. I believe I have one scheduled for the same day that there's an audit committee meeting of the whole. What date is that? Is that May 4th, May 5th? Chuck Johnson, and we can talk about this in executive session, particularly because this also relates to individuals and I don't want to, and many of the individuals, we're looking at them, we're staring at you right in the face, it has their names and, well, not their names, but the positions right on here. So I don't want to, I'm even a little bit uncomfortable discussing this from here today as when we're talking about things that's going to affect individuals, could affect individuals livelihood. So I would, I would like to have this in an executive session and we can, in a special meeting, that's when we go into an executive session. We have one scheduled for May 4th. So if I can have a, if I can get a motion to table this, I would be, I would be happy for that.
So moved?
Moved by Commissioner Williams, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner White. Table goes straight to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so next week we'll get further clarification on this from Chuck and then we can have a little bit more discussion around this in executive session. Did I get all the resolutions?
It's the two that go into executive session.
All right, we have two resolutions where we need to move into executive session, but we're going to do that at the end of the meeting, just so everyone knows, and that's Resolution 742 and, I mean, yeah, 742 and what is the other one?
756.
742 and 756. All right, we'll move on to unfinished business. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, we, you know, we got some, we got caught up and there are some gifts that we got and I want to thank those folks for their gifts. Commissioner Powell, can you just announce the gifts? And one resolution actually has your name in it, Commissioner Powell, Resolution 778.
I take particular pleasure in this one because you all have helped me dispose of a lingering problem. The, first, the Rochester area community foundation has donated $700 to Franklin Montessori. The National Academy Foundation and Oppenheimer funds has donated $1,000 for instructional supplies at Edison Business Finance and Entrepreneurship and at the International Finance and Economic Development Center at East High, or at Franklin and East High. About $500 donated by ExxonMobil for East High. $500 gift from KeyBank for Franklin and East High. Bureau American Action League donated almost $10,000 to school number six to be used on purchase of computers. And McDonald's Gone Corporation also contributing $500 to school number six. A thousand dollars from Mr. Theodore Morris for Charlotte High School. $2,000 donation from Mr. Darwin Palmeir for Charlotte High School. And a special thank you for your support of Resolution 778. When I joined the board back in 1998, I established a scholarship fund from my school board income and because of the changes to the schools, the scholarship was not able to be awarded any for, any longer and the fund held a balance, which is just set in our accounting office, maybe collecting interest, but probably not. And these rules will allow for final dispensation that will result in one more round of scholarships this June, with this June's graduation. And then anything that, any funds abandoned will then go to a fund for Jefferson, for the students, international students who might need non-specific help, economic help, food, clothing, shelter and that sort of thing.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell, for that. And also especially thank you too to the Guan Corporation. As you guys know, Mr. Guan passed away. He helped found a Ronald McDonald House and was very active in the, in the community. So thank you to the Guan Corporation and our condolences to the folks that worked for him as well as his family. We'll now move on to unfinished business from previous meetings, we have none. Under new business, we have an information item, proposed recruiting in schools policy 11240-1, it came, there was a question from a speaker that said, why is it on the agenda? Well, it's on the agenda because it came from the policy committee and the policy committee and Commissioner Powell followed the process that we have laid out for submitting policies to the board, which they did. So thank you for that. Commissioner Elliott and then Commissioner Powell.
Yes. In conversation with our, with the legal department there, Rajna had indicated that technically we can discuss this issue, that it does not have to be an information item, except I'm going to ask, particularly because I also wanted to discuss the whole notion of student arrest, if we could place this on the agenda or a special meeting that we can discuss the recruitment policy. And I'm also going to ask in reference to the student arrest, if we can do that in a special meeting. Is that something, Commissioner Powell, that you're okay with, particularly given the time that we've got to go back into our budget negotiations? And that was my concern.
Okay, Commissioner Powell.
Well, I concur that we don't need to be discussing this item. It would, under the ordinary flow of events, we would have our opportunity to discuss it as a board next month.
Right, me.
And in fact, I've had further thoughts and considerations resulting in another six-page white paper, if anybody cares to know, that I'd rather circulate amongst you between now and next month.
Okay, very well.
I don't know that a special meeting is necessary, except that there was some expectation.
Yeah, but that expectation, I don't know what folks, what I meant by that. And first off, I should clarify that from that young man from School of Arts who spoke eloquently. I didn't say that we would have a special meeting. What I meant was, was that it should be, it should be under new business on another agenda, which we do for all of our other policies. That's what I, that's what I meant, not a special meeting. So I don't know what that young man was talking about.
Yeah, and that was my, that was me. That was me saying it was a special meeting, but I'm okay, we can do that at the next meeting. My only issue was, is that we have been discussing this.
Right.
And I thought a special meeting would be sooner than the next meeting was my rationale for it, but we can-
But you're okay with the next, yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'm totally okay with not talking about this tonight.
Okay, that's fine. So we will, this will be discussed in May. I won't be here, but Commissioner White will be sitting in the president's chair to lead the meeting, so have fun with that. And also, under new business for next meeting, also, student arrest, there's been a lot of talk around that. Was that also something that you wanted to discuss at the next meeting also?
Or a special meeting, I guess I'm okay with if we do it at the next meeting.
Okay.
But there was a-
I mean, we do, I mean, I will mention, we do have a special meeting, we have two special meetings coming up, actually. We have one next week, but that one is, is tight because we have, and I've seen our clerk and staff wag their heads because we have the discussion around getting an update on contract negotiations and then we also have the audit committee meeting of the whole next Tuesday and the next Thursday, we have another special meeting in which we're voting on the budget. So-
So next month is-
Yeah, I think next month will be very, a good time to talk about that. Everyone has that policy. Commissioner Powell, I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add on that? No, everyone has it, everyone's read it. I have not read it yet, but I will. And we don't have any speakers on other agenda items.
Tom's got his hand up.
Oh, Commissioner Brennan?
Yes, just a quick thought. I understand completely how, now that you're explaining what you meant by what you said at the meeting, how that got misunderstood.
Right.
I think it's reasonable though, however, for people who were at the meeting, who saw that, and you know, meetings were recorded so we could always clear up the record, might have had a different impression. I'm just a little concerned that people who've come here, sat through, you know, this, you know, as we have for the last, you know, what is it, four or five hours now, and we still have further to go, there's some expectation that we might discuss this. In light of that, you know, it might be worthwhile for us to possibly consider either a special meeting, you know, given, given the level of public interest in this issue.
Well, I mean, I would be all in favor of the policy committee having a special meeting around this issue. Be very-
Sure.
I mean, a policy convened, a public hearing.
Of the whole, a policy committee meeting of the whole.
We could do something like that.
I'd be very, I'd be very interested in that.
I'm not trying to unduly, you know, burden anybody here, but there is a level of interest in this and the misunderstanding on both sides seems reasonable. I can see how the impression they had was what it was and I can see, understand what you're explaining as well, President Evans. Might that be something that we-
I'll just say, I have no problem with the policy committee having a policy committee meeting of the whole. Commissioner Elliott can schedule that with board staff, with board staff and anyone that wants to come and speak at that meeting can feel free to. I'll just personally say that I'll try to make it. I've definitely discussed, have heard enough on this issue. I spoke with Commissioner Powell at length on the issue, I spoke with the superintendent at length, military recruiters. I came in at the end of the last policy committee meeting. I've heard, I've heard folks at this meeting, I heard folks at the February meeting, but if someone wants to have another meeting to discuss this, I have no problem.
Yeah, I think, President Evans, we have been presented with an amendment to the policy.
Right.
And I think that's where we are now, to discuss those amendments. I think that it is, I don't know in terms of budgets, how many more meetings we have with that and all the other things that may take place in May, I think that we probably should just put it on the agenda for May and ask the public's indulgence to return for more, you know, for us to discuss the amendments to it. Things don't always happen quickly overnight and so this is a policy that is, you know, people have strong positions on. I've read the, I've read Commissioner Powell's amendments, I've got some discussion, I just think that it's going to take some time for us to think about it and also in this form, I believe, in order to really give it credence and the kind of attention in terms of the amendments that Commissioner Powell has put forth. And I'd like to really do it at this, at this-
When you say this, you mean at the next business meeting?
At the next business meeting, yes.
And, and, and if I, and if I can just add, you know, we did this with the wellness policy. The wellness policy came, it came as an, as a information item, folks were supposed to go home, read it, make discussions, make changes to it. Then at the, then at the following meeting, it was discussed and then at the subsequent meeting after that, it was approved. So Commissioner White.
No, I was just going to say, I, the only problem with putting it on May's meeting is the same thing will happen. It will be lost and people will sit around for four or five hours and then maybe we'll get to it on new business, I don't know exactly, or old business, unfinished business.
The old business.
Unfinished business, so that'll be after all these resolutions are read. And I think there may be some value in- there may be some value in giving it its own opportunity for folks to just talk about it. I would volunteer my date for the ESA meeting, obviously, maybe we could do some switching with policy. We have a reserved meeting date of May 14th, that's a Thursday at 5:30. I would be more than willing to give that date to the policy committee if you wanted to have it. I would certainly be there. Other members who are a member of ESA might have that time set aside already.
There is a very definite conflict, by the way, with that date.
With May 14th. The Democratic Convention.
Yeah.
May 14th?
Yeah.
And I'll just note for the, for the record too, for my friends.
Not that we have anything to do there, but.
Right. But I'll just note for my friends that if you notice, this meeting tonight is being held on Tuesday, April 28th. Our regular business meeting is Thursday, April 30th. So we've been juggling schedules like nuts.
We have.
And it will continue to be juggled like nuts, so I mean.
It's almost over.
And so if anybody wants a special meeting, that's fine with me, but I just need folks to make sure they can show up to them. I need to make sure that I can get a quorum for these meetings. I mean, we're meeting here on a Tuesday, our scheduled meetings are on a Thursday. So I mean, again, I have no problem with that. I mean, I'm on time and I show up to every meeting that we have.
Nobody, anyway, I want to make it really clear that my, at least my, far as my line of inquiry goes, it was in no way critical of anybody here or anybody's level of interest or commitment to discussing the issue. That wasn't what I was saying at all. I think it's a totally, it was a totally understandable kind of, you know, if you're sitting out there, you could have one impression from what was said and I certainly understand your explanation and I don't think there was any, that this reflects any lack of willingness on our part to hear from people or to have this discussed. I was just suggesting that although our schedule was really heavy, we can repeat what we did tonight.
Right, and the other thing I'll say too is tonight, I didn't hear both sides of the issue. I want to hear from some military recruiters and they'll have their opportunity at next meeting. And I also want to hear from some students in our O T C and they can have their opportunity at next meeting if they know that we are discussing this next meeting. And I'm sure more anti-war folks will come next meeting. So I think that we'll have the, you, well, you all.
Eventually we'll all be arrested and thrown in jail.
Right, so you all will have that, you all will have that opportunity next meeting.
You just want it done when you're not here, that's all.
Commissioner Powell, you're brilliant. So are we fine with this being discussed at the next May meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Before we go into executive session to discuss those two, two quick resolutions, I just want to announce the next special meeting of the board, the budget adoption is May 7, 2009 at 6:00. The board business meeting is May 28, 2009 at 6:30. There is an audit committee meeting of the whole on, Commissioner Williams, that next Tuesday?
Yes.
Next Tuesday and that will be followed by an executive session to discuss other items. I'll entertain a motion to move into executive session. I will ask my colleagues to please move expeditiously to the superintendent's conference room. To this, moved by Commissioner Elliott, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice President White, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we stand in executive session. We will then come back here and vote and then continue with budget deliberations.
Commissioner Powell warned everybody about tonight.
She did.
She did warn everybody.